Okay, my name is.
I'm sorry, who's speaking? I'm not sure who's speaking. It's not yet your turn to speak. It's my turn to speak. And it's no problem. I'll make we'll make sure that I make it clear when we're open for public comment about which issues, okay? So standard disclaimer here for the Zoom meeting. If you're able to, please mute your line when you're not speaking so that we can minimize the amount of background noise and echoes. And with that, I will call to order this regular meeting and public hearing of the Town and Ledgey Planning and Zoning Commission. It is Thursday, June 10th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. This is a Zoom remote meeting. Let me go ahead and do the roll call. Mr. Cherry?
Yeah.
I don't think that was Mr. Cherry. So Mr. Cherry was excused. He sent me a note earlier. Mr. Boudreaux?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not again, I apologize. The woman who's speaking, what's your name, please?
Oh, my name is Gopin. Last name is Penn, Unit 7, Christie here.
Okay, great. So Ms. Gopin, we have not gotten to a point where I'm taking public input, so I'll ask you to refrain from speaking. I assume you want to speak regarding the application on Long Cove Road?
No, I just to see, I just to see, I don't want cut the tree, keep it nice.
Right. And so when we get to that application, I will let you know that it is your opportunity to speak on that issue. We're not speaking on that issue right now. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, Ms. Scanlon. Mrs. Scanlon is excused. She sent me an email as well. Mr. Wood?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Capeon?
Here.
And the Chair President here. So I'm going to seat Ms. Evans for the absentee Mr. Cherry. And I will seat Mr. Capeon for the absentee Ms. Scanlon. So we still have five with two alternates there. Okay, next is citizens petitions. This is for anyone in the public who wishes to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. So if you are here to speak on an agenda item, now is not the time to speak. This is only for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on. I have no approvals or changes to the agenda. And so we will move to our first public hearing. So at 7:05 p.m., I will open the public hearing for application PZ 21-05. There's a map amendment at 1978 Route 12, Gales Ferry. The owner is Donald Bossarday for a zoning map amendment to change the property from the Neighborhood Commercial District to the R40 district. I will read those exhibits into the record and forgive me as I as I go through this electronically. Exhibit number one is the application packet, which was received April 5th, 2021. That includes the application itself, the property summary card, as well as printouts from the GIS, the town GIS. Exhibit number two is a referral to Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. It's dated April 12th, 2021. Exhibit number three is a referral to the DEEP, dated April 12th, 2021. Exhibit number four is the public hearing notice to the applicant. This is dated April 14th, 2021. That states the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a remote public hearing for this application at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, May 13th, 2021 via Zoom. Please be aware that you or your representative must be in attendance for this public hearing to answer any questions the commission may have. Because of a procedural problem, we were not able to open the public hearing on May 13th, so we are instead opening it this evening. Exhibit number five is a reply from Sam Alexander at the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, dated April 16th, 2021, stating, Dear Mr. Woody, I'm writing in response to an application to amend the zoning map of the Town of Ledgey. The application was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 83B of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed zoning map amendment seeks to change the zoning designation of a parcel on Route 12 from Neighborhood Commercial to Medium Density Residential District R40. Based on a review of the material submitted, I do not believe that the proposed map amendment will have a negative intermunicipal impact. Exhibit number six is a reply from the DEEP to our referral dated May 10th, 2021. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying this Office of the Proposed Zoning Regulation Amendment noted above. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the amendment for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, and we find it to be consistent with the CCMA. Our review indicates that the proposed district change from Neighborhood Commercial to R40 will decrease the maximum lot coverage from 80% to 40%, which could result in less stormwater generated on developed sites. The proposed amendment will also provide the opportunity for a conservation subdivision development, which would allow for the protection of open space and natural resources within an area of residential development. Please be advised that this consistency determination is based on coastal management considerations only and does not necessarily reflect other municipal planning and zoning considerations which may apply. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Section 22A 104E of the Connecticut General Statutes, which requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. That's from, I'm going to get this name wrong, from Amy Quisp at the Land and Water Resources Division. Exhibit number seven is the Town Clerk application posting dated May 11th, 2021. Exhibit number eight is the Butters Notice, originally dated May 17th, 2021. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 87D, you are being notified of a public hearing scheduled for the subject application in 1978 Route 12, Gales Ferry, Connecticut. The Ledgey Planning and Zoning Commission will hold this public hearing on June 10th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. A copy of this complete application is available to be viewed in the Land Use Department located at the Ledgey Town Hall. Written comments submitted prior to the public hearing by 6:00, 7:00, 21 will be uploaded on the meeting agenda. The meeting information will be available on the Town Ledgey's website. If you wish to attend, please contact the Land Use Department with any questions. Exhibit number nine is the staff report from Mr. Felice. That's the last exhibit I have. Mr. Felice? Can you hear me, Kyle?
Yes, I can hear you, Nate.
Would you like to present this exhibit since it's yours instead of mine?
Certainly, I can just summarize it quickly.
Thank you.
So the property is 1978 Route 12, located in Gales Ferry. It's located on approximately 6.78 acres in the Neighborhood Commercial District, approximately 110 feet of frontage on Connecticut Route 12. It's currently developed with an existing single-family home, approximately 2,234 square feet. Original building part for the home was approved by the past Building and Zoning officials in 1995 with a listed zoning district of R40. Our assessor's records indicated that at some point in 1993, the property was rezoned to Neighborhood Commercial. We were unable to locate any formal zone change application, and I went through previous minutes for those that that year and surrounding years. I couldn't find anything. But it is showing as Neighborhood Commercial on our current zoning map. So at this time, the applicant wishes to continue and expand his principal residential use of the property and return it to its pre-1993 designation as R40. Um, let me just get around here. So currently, as Neighborhood Commercial, the property is nonconforming because residential use is not a permitted use. So this would essentially eliminate that nonconformity. Yeah, I just mentioned our referrals. And then I have a suggested motion at the end, but that's the summary of it. Attachments to my memo are some old building permits and COs. Can you see what I was referencing in my memo? But that's the gist of it.
Great. Thanks, Kyle. That's all the exhibits we have. Is there someone here to speak for the applicant? Mr. Bossarday, are you present?
Yep, Mr. Bossardad is here and his wife Karen.
Great, thank you. I apologize if I butchered your last name.
You've done a lot better than most.
Thank you. I'm not trying to mispronounce it if I am.
Any additional letters?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I mean, do you want to tell us, it sounds like this is essentially an application to continue the current use for the property? That you don't have any intention on altering the use. It's really just to continue what has sort of what has been the de facto use on the property?
That is correct. So when we went for the application, when we when we decided we were going to add in addition to the existing property, the existing residence, we didn't think there would be an issue or that it would be an illegal use of our residency with the size. There is a size limit, and Kyle explained that to us, and we didn't want to reduce the addition to the property. So the easiest path we thought was to just rezone it back to R40, since most of the or all of the budding land is R40 in our area.
Right, okay. So is there anything else that you want to state about the process before I open this up for public comment?
Nope.
Okay, and we'll come back to you. So if people have questions or something, we can always come back to you. So with that, is there anyone in the public here that wishes to speak on this proposed zone change? Hearing none, are there any commissioners who have questions for Mr. Bossarday?
No.
Hearing none, I will close the public hearing for application PZ 21-05 at 7:14 p.m. With that, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is decision, discussion and decision for the same application, application PZ 21-05 map amendment. I will entertain a motion. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
This is, I was just going to say, this is Commissioner Wood. I had it on my screen, but I was going to, maybe I would recommend Commissioner Woody that Kyle read it, maybe. Is that acceptable or?
I'll go ahead and read it. I've got it in front of me. Thank you. Yeah. So I will make a motion to approve the zone change. After giving due consideration to all relevant factors, including the application, all of its supporting documentation comments from the public hearing held 6:10, 21, I moved that the application PZ 21-05 map of applicant owner Donald Bossardet for a zoning map amendment to change 1978 Route 12, Gales Ferry, Connecticut, in its entirety from Neighborhood Commercial to Medium Density Residential R40, be approved with an effective date of June 18th, 2021. By approving the zoning map amendment, the commission has considered the plan of conservation and development and a comprehensive plan, zoning regulations and map, and finds it consistent with both of its goals in that it maintains existing residential development, eliminates the nonconforming use of the property. If I can have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Was that a second for Mr. Capeon?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, yeah, so essentially what we've got is it appears that we have a zone change that occurred without the owner actually knowing that it was happening. We have a current nonconforming use that has been there for a couple of decades. And so changing this to R40 would remove that nonconformity. It's also in line with the existing zoning map. You know, as Mr. Bossarday stated and anyone who's looked at the GIS map, this is essentially the southernmost property on that small piece of a small set of Neighborhood Commercial parcels. And the lots that abut it to the south, as well as the east and on the other side of the road, are all zoned R40. So it certainly fits with the surrounding properties and getting that property conforming is advantageous. If questions or comments from commissioners regarding this application?
This is Commissioner Wood. I would speak in favor of this motion, so I endorse this motion.
Okay, thank you. Any any other questions or concerns from commissioners? Hearing none, I will call the roll call vote stating to approve the zone change, and that we have considered both the POC and the existing zoning map. Mr. Capeon? Ms. Evans?
Hi.
Mr. Wood?
Hi.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. So the motion passes 5:00. And so we set the effective date for that as June 18th, which is next Thursday, which our attorney says we can do it as quickly as that. So we have done that. So thank you very much for your attendance this evening, and we'll move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is another public hearing. And with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:18 p.m. for application PZ 21-06 SUP 964 Long Cove Road. Applicant is James Robinson. This is for the applicant, this is for a special use permit approval for earth product excavation and removal and for construction of a detached steel garage. So I will read the exhibits in. Give me one sec to get these open so that I can go through them. Okay, we have currently 17 exhibits for this application. Exhibit number one is the application packet. And forgive me, I'm waiting for it to open. The application is was dated as received April 22, 22, 2021. It includes a narrative from Andrew McCoy, the application itself, an authorization letter, as well as an initial set of drawings for the garage and the property. Exhibit two is a is seven pages, a seven-page map layout of the garage itself. Exhibit number three is a one-page schematic layout of the site. Exhibit number four is the second sheet, which shows elevations as well as topography. Exhibit numbers five and six are updates to exhibit number two, received April 19th, 2021. Exhibit number seven is the public hearing notice to the applicant. This is dated May 19th, 2021, and is addressed to Attorney Andrew McCoy. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing for this application at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 10th, 2021 via Zoom. Please be aware that you or your representative must be in attendance for this public hearing to answer any questions the commissioner may have. It does note that notification to the adjacent property notice is required within 10 days of the public hearing in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 87D, and includes a map and the list of Butters. Exhibit number eight is the transmittal from the Town of Ledgey Planning Department to the Town Engineer and Ledge Light Health District. This is dated May 26th, 2021. Exhibit number nine is the legal notice for the planning for the public hearing. States at 7:00 p.m. Thursday, June 10th, 2021, the Ledgey PCC will hold its regular meeting and public hearings on the following applications remotely via Zoom. Application PZ 21-06 SUP 964 Long Cove Road, Ledgey, Connecticut. Owner applicant James Robinson for special use permit application for earth product excavation removal and for construction of detached steel garage. Copy. Park in Town Hall, 741 Colonel Ledgey. Exhibits number 10 and 11 are updated drawings. These revisions are dated 5/27/21. Exhibit number 12 is the letters to Butters and certified mailing receipts. These are all dated June 1, 2021. The letter sent to the Butters is included in that exhibit. Exhibit number 12. Forgive me, I can only click to open these so fast. Okay, let's see. Exhibit number 13 is what we're on, which is the attorney, which is a letter from Mr. Andrew McCoy at Heller Heller McCoy, dated May 19th, 2021, to Ledge Light Health District. To whom it may concern, please be advised that this office represents James Robinson, the owner of property located at 964 Long Cove Road, Ledgey, Connecticut. On behalf of our client, we are applying for a special permit in order to remove earth product from the subject property and to construct a detached steel garage, known more specifically as Crown International Steel Building Systems, model number P25-13, upon the aforesaid property in accordance with the site plan entitled Plan Shine Proposed Garage and Material Removal Operation, property of James S. Robinson, 964 Long Cove Road, Ledgey, Connecticut. Prepared by Dieter and Gardner Incorporated, revised May 14th, 2021, and the building plans for the proposed detached garage attached herewith. The location of the proposed detached steel garage is indicated on the attached site plan. A copy of the site plan is enclosed for your reference. On behalf of our client, we are applying to the Town of Ledgey Zoning Commission for a special permit to authorize the excavation and subsequent construction of the proposed detached garage as delineated on the above referenced plan. As part of that application process, we are required to obtain your review and approval of the proposed excavation and construction pursuant to 1913B 100A of the Public Health Code. I forward herewith for your reference, a copy of the site plan, a copy of the special application filed with the Town of Ledgey Zoning Commission. If you find the requested excavation and construction of the proposed detached garage to be compliant with the Connecticut Public Health Code, I would request that you endorse the application for special permit on behalf of Ledge Light Health District and return the same to me in the enclosed address stand envelope. The enclosures in this correspondence should be retained for the records of Ledge Light Health District. Exhibit number 14 is the planner memo dated June 1st, 2021. Ms. Burdick, would you like to introduce this exhibit rather than have me read it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'll try to be as brief as as possible. So I will read this application and all its supporting documents. The property address is 964 Long Cove Road. It's a special use permit site plan approval, and the applicant and property owner is James Robinson. Agent is Attorney Andrew McCoy from Heller Heller McCoy. The property is located on 2.44 acres, has 225.03 feet on Long Cove Road. It's located in the R40 zoning district. There's public water and on-site septic. Wetlands and water courses. There are apparent wetlands at the northwest corner of the property. It is not in a flood hazard zone. It is not in a cam zone, and it is not in a public water supply watershed. And I checked that to make sure. No proposed public improvement. The hearing is opened today. It has to close by 7:14 without an extension. The existing conditions, the site is developed with three single-family residences making use of the property and apparent legal nonconforming use. We did a lot of research on that. We did find one of the accessory buildings had been converted to a single-family residence with permits. I couldn't find permits for the third, but it's been on the assessor's database for a very long time as a third dwelling unit. So it's legal nonconforming use of the property. So the property was subject to an enforcement action by the Ledgey DO, Paul Felice, in October 19, when the property owner began exhumation of the site for this accessory structure, and he didn't have the required permits. So he did he did stop the activity, and there hasn't been any since that time. And the property owner hired Dieter and Gardner to prepare for the project in order to apply for the special use permit for the excavation in the garage. And again, he's being represented by Attorney McCoy. The proposal is a major excavation operation, which is greater than 300 cubic yards. The agency states remove earth products from the property and construct a detached steel garage. Difference in the amount of material between existing and proposed contours is approximately 3,800 plus or minus cubic yards. The about 1,086 square foot proposed steel garage also requires a special use permit in accordance with zoning regulations, Section 8.2, as the proposed height of the structure at 13 feet, 5.522, is 12 feet. And that's in accordance with our accessory structure regulation. There are apparent wetlands located on the northwest corner of the site, but there's no proposed activity within a regulated wetlands or upland area, but just outside. So my recommendation would be that as any, if this were to be considered for approval, that a condition of approval that a licensed land surveyor clearly stake out the limits of disturbance was not to, quote, into the upland review area. So the rest of my memorandum, and I'd be happy to read it into the record, Ledge Light Health District review comments are pending. So we do not have anything at this time. State of Connecticut Department of Health, that is a typo. The Department of Health has no reason to comment on this application. I apologize. The DPW Director of Town Engineer, those review comments are pending as well. Mr. Masson was out for some time in the past two weeks, so for Family Matters, so those review comments are pending. But we have forwarded a copy of the plan to him to comment on the excavation operation. A bond is outstanding. Site erosion and sediment control bond estimate has to be submitted for review and approval by the Town Engineer, and that has not been submitted yet, but we'll have to do that. And then the bond should be posted before the start of any work. So going into the rest of my, do you want me to read all my comments on the deficiencies into the record? Has everybody read my my comment? Because these are things that will be have to be addressed for the next meeting.
Yeah, so my, I don't think you need to read them in. It's on the record. For everyone, this this public hearing will be continued to our next meeting, next meeting, because there is information. Because there is information that we don't have yet. And so we'll have, what will hopefully be a finalized memo at that point describing whether or not these issues have been resolved. So I don't think you need to read all of that in.
Okay, fine. Yeah. And I don't actually, I have no recommendation at this time because there's a lot of plan revisions that are required, a lot of comments that are outstanding. We haven't heard public testimony yet. So at this point, my recommendation is reserved and that's all I have unless anyone has any questions for me.
So we'll get to that. So I'll finish reading the last of the exhibits in. And then if there are any questions that commissioners have for staff at that point, we can do that. So that was exhibit number 14. Exhibit number 15 is the narrative dated June 2, 2021. From, I assume this is from Mr. McCoy or and he is here tonight. And so I'll let him introduce this application and discuss that in detail. I won't read that memo in at this point. Exhibit number 16 is a letter from Charlene Sanders dated June 2, 2021. That states, Dear Ms. Mrs. Burdick, I am writing to tell you this this past weekend, a lot of Christie Hill condo owners received a letter from Heller Heller McCoy, a tenor's attorneys at law. They are representing a Mr. James Robinson, the owner of the property in 964 Long Cove Road. He is asking to put up a big steel garage on his property. It is heartbreaking to see Mr. Robinson take more and more trees down as the years go by. And now wanting more trees taken down and more land dug away to put up a large garage so close to where we all live. If you could help us, we we all would be thankful for your help. I have nine signatures so far voting for a no vote. It's hard. People are either working on vacation or not opening doors because of COVID. But I will get more so I can show you. We are upset over this. Thank you for listening to me. I hope you can help. Sincerely, Charlene Sanders. Exhibit number 17 is a sheet of signatures from Charlene Anderson. Received received June 7, 2021. There are 17 signatures, I believe, on here stating that these are the signatures for meeting on June 10, 2021 at 7:00 PM. These owners all said no to the garage request by Mr. Robinson of 964 Long Cove Road. The last exhibit, exhibit number 18 is a set of two images. The top is pulled from the GIS. The second is an overhead image of the subject property. That is all the exhibits I have at this point. And as stated, this public hearing is going to be continued, so we will not be closing this public hearing nor voting to approve or deny this application this evening. With that said, Mr. McCoy, I believe I saw you. Are you present?
I am. Thank you.
Great. Would you like to present this application?
I would. I would be brief. For the record, attorney Andrew McCoy. I have an office at Heller Heller and McCoy. We are located at 736 Northern London Turnpike in Uncasville, Connecticut. I am here on behalf of the applicant Robinson. If you cannot hear me, if there's any technical difficulties, I apologize. My wife is at a Zoom meeting tonight, so I've been sent to my in-law's house to do this meeting. So if I lose any or have any technological issues, I apologize.
We can hear you just fine right now.
Perfect. I don't want to overstep on what was already said, but it is our intent to do a full presentation at the next hearing in July. As you've indicated, this public hearing will be continued until July. And so we'd like to reserve our comments and responses to any questions or concerns and our full presentation to that time in July so that we can address the open comments from ledge light and staff members as well as to make those revisions that Ms. Burdick has pointed out. We'd also like to investigate and make sure that the contour lines of the topography as it exists on the property today is as accurate as possible. And to address any concerns that may be brought forth tonight. Just a brief overview of the project. Mr. Robinson is looking to excavate the rear portion of his property in order to construct a steel garage thereupon. If possible, is it okay if I share my screen? I think it might be helpful.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let me make sure that I have this. Okay. Can everyone see that? Okay?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. Um, I believe, and I apologize, I thought that this was what would have been exhibit 11, but I believe that this is actually exhibit six, but for purposes of discussion, I don't think that the distinction really matters. As I said, he's looking to excavate in the rear portion of his property. This will be done in one phase and done using either a backhoe or an excavator, whatever the commission seeks to approve. Again, it'll be done in one phase. It should be noted that any material that is excavated will be trucked off site. The trucks leaving the site will be using the existing paved driveway to enter and exit the property. No material will be work, will be processed onsite. Any material excavated will be from the site and processed elsewhere. The steel garage, and I'll pull up what is, and that's exhibit D to the application packet. And I believe the application packet for purposes of this public hearing is exhibit one. The proposed steel garage, and I, please pardon my artistic skills here. I've circled the general look of what that garage will be. Mr. Robinson has has indicated that he's looking to do a neutral color for this, so a beige or tan. The intent is so that it blends in surroundings rather than sticks out. That's going to be an eyesore.
We've got a ton of background noise. If you are not Mr. McCoy, please either read your line or be quiet. Sorry, Mr. McCoy. Continue.
Not a problem. The proposed use for this garage is merely storage. As Ms. Burdick indicated, he had intended to build this and was improperly excavating and and was issued a cease and desist. But his original intent was to clean up the property to make it vastly improved so that he could see that it looks nice. And that he's able to store everything in the property in the garage so that it's a lot more sightly. It's it's better. It's important to note that there is no intent, nor are we proposing that any commercial use will be made of this structure. It is merely for storage. Again, it's to clean up the property. Ultimately, the purpose of this application is to clean up his property and make it so that it appears nicer and fits in better and vastly improves the neighborhood. Our goal is to maintain the upper levels of the topography as much as possible, along with the vegetation that exists in order to maintain the natural screen that is there to protect him from his budding properties and neighbors. The goal here and intent here is not so that anyone has to look into his property. To the contrary, he would like to maintain it so that the properties maintain the same view that they have as it stands today. Again, this is a very brief overview of it, but we we want to give a full presentation once we've had a chance to make the revisions and once all the comments from the staff and ledge light are received. We'd request that any, any questions that the commission may have, we have a chance to answer those at the next meeting. Our representative from Dieter and Gardner, it's our intent that they will be at the next meeting, so they will be here to answer any technical questions as well. And if the public has any comments tonight, again, we request that reserve the right to respond to those in our full presentation.
Sure. I think that's fine. So I'll start. I mean, I have a couple of brief questions that that you can add to your list. So the first, if I understand the topography correctly, there's essentially a hill in the back of the property, correct? And so the the earth moving is to remove a portion of that hill for the building construction. Is that correct?
So you are correct that there is a hill. And again, this is why we want to confirm that our contour lines reflect this adequately. But the intent is that the excavation will be graded toward, and I'm putting my hand up towards the camera. It's going to be graded towards the applicant's property, not to remove portions of the hill on the other side, say, on the side of budding Christie Hill, but rather to grade it towards Mr. Robinson's property. So to maintain the the height of the hill, but just grade it so that it's it's a much more pleasing look in the backyard.
Okay, so yeah, I'll leave that for clear topographical maps from you from from next time. Because it strikes me that if the location of the garage is simply moved to the east some, they move onto much flatter ground where perhaps less earth moving would be required. So perhaps next time you can explain a little bit about why that's being chosen to be located there and and whether or not all of that earth moving is required for construction or if it's being done essentially as a as a secondary process. Do other questioner, other, excuse me, do other commissioners have questions that they'd like to ask of Mr. McCoy at this point? Hearing none then, I will.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I was on muting myself. I do have a, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering what the the flooring it will be made out of. And so I would like to have that covered. And if there's any drains, I'd like to know the status of the drains that would be in the floor. And if there are drains in the floor, I'd like to know where that drainage would go to. I'm I'm assuming there would be some equipment in there with the gas, oil and stuff like that. And so I would like to make, I'd like to, Mr. McCoy, when you do your presentation, that you address the flooring and what would happen if the oils and and petroleum products were to leak out of whatever was in there. I also would like to know kind of missed the the chair, Chairman Woody mentioned 38, well. Chairman Woody did not mention 3,800 cubic feet, but he did bring up a point about moving it to the east and in. If if the minimum or the maximum is 300 cubic feet, as Ms. Burdick pointed out, we're 300 3,800 cubic yards, excuse me, yards instead of feet. So that's 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 a huge amount over whatever the maximum is of 300 cubic yards specified in our in in some regulations. So I would like to know that too.
Yeah, so just to be clear, we essentially have two categories of earth moving. And so it's over or under 300 cubic yards. And since this is over 300 cubic yards, it falls under the special permit restriction. So that's a dividing line in our our regulations. Yeah, it's a good question. I think I think some answers about that's an awful lot of of earth to be moved. And I think we're going to want to know, understand that a little bit better. So I agree with Mr. Woods' comments. Do other committees have questions?
Hi, Nate.
None. I will open up to Ms. Evans, please.
Hillary Evans, and this is not a question, it's a comment. I live in Christie Hill condos, so I just am going to recuse myself from any discussion or anything having to do with this. And I just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Yeah, and as stated, we'll be holding no votes on this this evening. So there is nothing for you to recuse yourself from this evening. But we will be aware of that for our next meeting. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none at this point, I will open up the floor to the public for anyone who wishes to make a comment either for or against this application. And so when you wish to speak on the application, what I ask is that you start by giving your name and your address so that we know who's speaking. And then you can speak on the application.
Hello, I'd like to speak.
Please.
My name is Charlene Sanders. I live over the Christie Hill condos and I've lived here for over 20 years. And then for the last two or three years, it's been so much noise over there and every year more and more trees come down. And I just worry about if the garage goes up and it's a storage thing, what happens if people like store gasoline or things that'll bother people's breathing. There's a lot of older people over here. And I, you know, I don't want anything to happen to them, like from fumes for something. You never know. Sometimes when we clean our garages, people get carried away and puts things in there and you can get like vapors or spills or leaks and at least to pollution and bad health. And you just don't know what's going to happen. It's just so close to the wall that's been dug out on our side. And I just worry about what's going to happen over there.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. I think that's in line with Mr. Woods' question about understanding how materials will be stored and, you know, how things like drainage or anything like that will be dealt with. So we'll we'll hope to get answers to those questions from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application?
Mr. Chairman, this is Eric Treister, Ten Huntington Way. I'd like to speak in opposition to the application.
Please, Mr. Treister.
The I'm opposed to this application for several reasons, but basically because I believe the proposed industrial style steel structure will be an eyesore that will reduce the value of the condominiums at 1538 Route 12. I also believe that such a structure and its proposed sole use for storage do not comply with the zoning regulations for residential districts. According to the property card, 964 Long Cove Road is nonconforming because it has three preexisting single family dwellings on one lot, one of which does not comply with the current zoning regulations. It is a one bedroom, one story, 384 foot tiny house. The property also has a one bedroom, one story, 600 foot house and a three bedroom, one story, 1,120 foot house. However, the Google Earth photo of the property, which I just submitted into the record of a couple of hours ago, shows that there are at least four and possibly up to six structures on the property, one of which may be a shipping container. There also appears to be a backhoe stored on the property. There is also a GIS map of the property that I submitted for the record. It shows the condominium up to be only about 120 feet west of the property. The condominium is not shown on the site plan. In order for the commission to make an informed decision, the site plan must be amended by adding the nearby condominium. In addition, the structures shown in the Google photo that are not on the site plan should be added or the applicant should clarify that they are no longer on the property. The application also includes a two-page supplemental narrative. Both pages of the narrative state that upon completion, the garage shall be used solely for storage. The key words are solely for storage. The definition in section two of the zoning regulations for a structure to be an allowed accessory use is is that it must be customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the lot, which for 964 Long Cove Road is residential. The application for a special permit for a garage. The application is for a special permit for a garage. However, according However, according to the new Oxford American Dictionary, a garage is a building or shed for housing a motor vehicle or vehicles or an establishment that provides services and repairs for motor vehicles. There is nothing in the application showing that motor vehicles will ever be housed in the structure. General storage, the sole use of the proposed structure as promised in the narrative that is part of the application is not a customarily incidental subordinate accessory use of a residential property under the zoning regulations. As such, the first reason the application should be denied is because the proposed sole use, general storage, is not allowed in the zoning regulations in residential districts. But there are other reasons the application should be denied. The new Oxford American Dictionary defines a warehouse as a large building where raw materials or manufactured goods may be stored. As such, the second reason the application should be denied is because the proposed metal structure looks like and will be used essentially as a warehouse. And the use table in section three of the zoning regulations does not allow warehouses or warehousing in residential districts. The third reason to deny the application is because the proposed structure does not comply with section eight point two F in the zoning regulations, which limits the height of an accessory building to eighty percent of the height of the principal building, or twelve feet, whichever is greater. The height of the proposed garage is slightly over thirteen feet, five inches. The fourth reason is that the proposed garage does not comply with section eight point two G in the zoning regulations, which limits the area of the accessory garage to eighty percent of, of the living area of the principal building on the property. The living area of, of the three-bedroom home is one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. Eighty percent of one thousand one hundred and twenty is eight hundred and ninety-six feet. The proposed garage is just under eleven hundred square feet. The zoning regulations allow the commission to grant a special exception permit to allow an oversized accessory structure if the generic standards for the special exception permit are satisfied. The standards are in section seven point four of the zoning regulations. Although the proposed structure, because of its proposed use, is not an accessory structure as defined in section two of the regulations, it also does not comply with the standards for a special permit exception. The first standard is that its appearance must be consistent with the purpose of the district, which is to maintain existing medium-density residential development in the area. In my opinion, the appearance of the proposed oversized metal structure will be more like a small warehouse than a garage. And any structure that looks like a warehouse is not consistent with maintaining the existing medium-density residential development near the property. The second and third standards are that the structure's size and character must be in harmony with the surrounding area. In my opinion, due to its size and appearance, the proposed structure is in harmony with commercial and industrial districts, but is not in harmony in a residential district. This is especially true for the residential developments near this particular property, which consists mostly of smaller, older homes, lots of mobile homes, and older single-car wooden garages. The fifth reason to deny the application is because it will create an eyesore that will have a detrimental impact on the values of the adjacent condominiums that have a direct view of the proposed structure. One of the statutory purposes of requiring a special permit is to protect property values. This is achieved by allowing the commission to impose conditions of approval. As such, the commission should deny the application unless it imposes conditions of approval sufficient to protect the property values of the adjacent condominiums. The sixth and final reason the application should be denied is because the application is incomplete. Section six point six B twelve G in the zoning regulations requires applications that involve filling, excavating, or relocation of topsoil, sand, gravel, clay, stone, or other minerals to show the location of existing structures that are on adjacent properties. The application omitted this required information, which is necessary for the commission to make an informed decision. Thank you. And I will enter my presentation into the record for review, for your, for your, for the follow-on meeting. Thank you. And I'll, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Treaster. I appreciate that. And Mr. McCoy, I'd like to follow on that. For our next meeting, I would certainly like to see some clarity for why the buildings on the site plan don't seem to match up with the aerial photo that were provided. And so some understanding about what is actually on the property and understanding what the final state of those buildings will be after this project is completed.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Yep. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this application?
Hi, my name's Jim Arak. I'm not sure if you could see me on Zoom, but.
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, so Christie Hill condos had chosen me, including Charlene, who's the president. It chose me to be the spokesperson on behalf of the seventeen folks that signed the petition against this construction and the plans. And I had a few questions of my own, but before I did that, we actually have two, three, we have four other people besides Charlotte, myself, that wanted to make comments. Kathy, are, are you ready for your comment, your question?
I am ready. Yes, I am. Okay, mine.
So, so this is, this is fine. And so what I'll do is I'll ask, you know, for each of these people, when you're ready to speak, just state your name and your address, which I guess we mostly know all of your addresses, but go ahead and state your name and address for the record. And then make your comment. And then we'll move to the next one. So I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
That's okay. My name is Kathy Haas. I live at fifteen thirty-eight Route twelve, Unit A two, in Christie Hill condos. First, I would like to thank Charlene, Jim, and Mr. Treaster for all the work that they've done. I really appreciate it. What I wanted to say was we, and some of my, my question, I think, has been answered, but I wanted to put my two cents in. We moved to Christie Hill condos to enjoy the scenic woodlands and quiet area. We didn't expect to see a garage of this size in our backyard. This is inconsistent with a residential zone. And also, why doesn't the application mention our condo units that exist directly behind nine sixty-four Long Cove Road? That's it. And thanks everyone for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jim Arak, spokesperson for Christie Hills. I'm at Unit C thirty. The next one would be Deb Ranquist. She's unavailable, so she asked to speak on, me for, to speak on her behalf, so I'll, I'll save that for the end. Dottie, are, are you on? You would be the next person from Christie Hills to speak if you're available.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, mine is more or less a comment. A couple of years ago, I heard a lot of bulldozers going on all summer long, and I was waiting for my ride. I live on fifteen thirty-eight Christie Hill. And all of a sudden, I heard this noise and I looked up. These are the trees behind Unit C, and which they're talking about. And I saw this monstrous tree falling. It's chilling. You can't take away what is so precious to us. This is our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dottie, are you able to state your last name and also which unit number?
Sure, I'm sorry. It's Dorothy Burgess, and I'm in Unit Four.
Thanks, Dottie. The next person we'd have is next door to me, Go. Are you available to speak right now?
And so I, I will advise you, anyone who isn't available to speak, they can absolutely show, show up at our next meeting to speak. They can also submit written comments, which will be added to the public record and read at the next meeting. So if they're not here, they, they still have an opportunity to participate.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks. I'll, I'll advise them that they can, they can send it written. So I, I guess I'll, I'll ask my questions. One of them, I'm not, I'm not sure. Not sure if you folks received a letter from our Realtor. My Realtor is actually a licensed real estate agent and qualified professional. That letter may have come in by email a little bit after five o'clock, so I'm not sure if that's allowed now or.
So we, we, we did receive, the, the land use office received the letter. It will be posted next week and added to the record and read in at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, and then I'd like to give a couple of comments and questions myself, Mr. Woody. So one, one thing I'd, I'd like to say is I'm, I'm not sure if, if you can see this on, on video or, or not, or if you have, if you have the aerial, you could see it's kind of a, you could see it's kind of a U shape where our building is, our building is right there. I'm not sure if you can see where my finger is, or if you can even make that out or not.
We can see it. And you're referring to a, the GIS map from the town ledger that you're showing an image from. And so all commissioners have access to that.
Okay, thank you, sir. So you could, you could see, and I'm just gonna, I'm just, I'll put this down in a second so I can speak. But right here, where you see my finger pointing, and if you can look real closely, if you would, please, you can see what looks to be a very large pile of rocks. And you can see that it's exactly on the border of our property line.
Yeah, I can make that out.
Okay, thank you. So what, what I'd like to point out is I walked from our property yesterday, and my work clothes, when I got out of work, up our hill. I passed by the markers that must have been sent by Mr. Robinson's surveyors. And when I got to the top, I'd taken some pictures, which I'll gladly drop those off at Town Hall. And they show clearly that where the holes were dug and what's shown on the map are far, far away from a massive amount of rocks, large rocks and small boulders that are exactly against where I'd shown you, which is right on the property line. So with that being said, previously from that work, there are uprooted trees that are lying down, and I can submit those pictures in Town Hall. And we also have erosion. And so it's, it's very difficult for me to imagine, Mr. Woody, how more such work with a garage that they plan to be putting so close to the property line is, is going to make things in harmony when there's already so much disharmony. And, and quite honestly, it's a, it's, it's a mess. And I understand that's in the past, but not only is the mess still there, but it's very difficult for me to imagine how no damage will be done at all to our property when we already have things on there as a result. And, and the surroundings there between the wooded area and, and what was wildlife is now just a bunch of exposed roots and, and large rocks and so forth. So that's, I guess, my, so my first question with that comment would be for Mr. McCoy. Mr. McCoy, would your client guarantee one hundred percent that there will be no such things done to our property at all? Because right now we have that right on the line, which you can see from the aerial, although it's not shown in a, in a, in a construction plan now.
So yeah, so I'll ask Mr. McCoy to follow up with clarity at the next presentation on, you know, I think we've talked this about a little bit, but on making sure that we understand what the proposed final site plan is actually going to look like. So that we make sure we get clarity on not only what's proposed, but what the actual final lay of the land will be.
Okay, terrific. And then the only other question I had, and then, then just a very quick closing comment, would be what exactly would be stored in a garage that's supposed to be in harmony with an R forty residential zone when such a massive steel structure, Mr. McCoy, actually contained a, a volume of in excess of ten thousand cubic feet? It's, it's quite enormous. And to be put so close to our property line, I, I'm just trying to imagine what it could be. And not only that, but whatever is in the machinery in there, if there were to be some sort of fluid leak of impact, we're right down the hill because the garage is planned to be, this massive industrial-sized steel garage is planned to be right next to the property line border. And any kind of fuel or oil leak and so forth will go right down the hill to our property. And like I mentioned earlier, sir, down trees or small boulders or large rocks, which are already on our property line, they may be on Mr. Robinson's side, but they're on the line. Very difficult for me to imagine if we've got down trees and so forth, how we're not going to get any more of that coming down such a steep hill where our building, which is Building C, is right at the bottom of that.
Yep, I, I understand. And so again, Mr. McCoy, we've had a couple of questions about understanding, making sure that we understand runoff and any environmental impacts. So drainage both outside the structure, as well as what happens if there's a leak inside the structure. We'll ask you to follow up on that at our next meeting.
It's not a problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Arach.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
No, thank you for participating. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak from the public? And again, you, you will have an opportunity in July. We won't be closing this, but any other comments for today?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion. And that is that perhaps it might be appropriate for the commission to consider a site walk of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Treaster. So that, that was going to be my next conversation if we were done with public comments. So is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak this evening on this application? So hearing none, I will continue this public hearing until our July meeting. Ms. Burdick, could you clarify essentially what the process is for doing a site walk on an application? As, you know, is one of the things that, that I was thinking about before Mr. Treaster made that comment is, yeah, there seems to be a fair amount of confusion about what's actually going on on the site. And it might be useful for commissioners to be able to really understand the lay of the land, understand some of the, the topography questions that are being raised so that we can understand what's actually going on here. What's, what is the process for that?
So, so the process would be, I, I would actually recommend a site walk, given the comments this evening and that everyone can take the site in. This would be a special meeting site walk. And what happens with that, it's posted as a special meeting site walk. There's nothing else on the agenda. The purpose of a site walk is for the commissioners to view the site and ask questions specifically like, where is the excavation going? The public would be welcome, but the public cannot speak. This is just a site walk for purposes of, you know, seeing where everything is, seeing what's on the site, perhaps maybe seeing how close the Christie Hills condominium is to the property. I would recommend that you have it, you know, well, obviously, the next meeting is July eighth. Perhaps if the commissioners and Attorney McCoy is available, you could do it on the twenty-sixth, which would be in two weeks. I always suggest a Saturday because then most of the commissioners are not working and they can make it, but certainly with the nice weather and it being light out later, you could set one up for a weeknight if, if other commissioners are available. Andrew, Attorney McCoy, are you okay with having site walk?
June, I, I'm, the site walk is fine if that's what the commission would like to do. Saturdays work best for myself and likely my client. It, it's just easier to schedule, unfortunately, with our busy schedules. So during the week, it becomes difficult because it would have to be later in the evening.
Can I hear from other commissioners, whether they think this is a good idea? I, I think it probably is to let us get, get some eyeballs on this and just understand. I, I think it probably is to let us get, get some eyeballs on this and just understand exactly where things are on the site.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Bedrow. Please. I'm up for it and I think we need it.
Here, Commissioner Wood, I, I think it's a fantastic idea. So thanks. And I, I would make myself available.
Tony Kapon.
Okay, great. So what I'll, what I'll ask then is Kyle, are you still online? Kyle, Mr. Felice, are you still online?
Mr. Chairman, he may not be online. He had a matter that he had to attend to.
Fair enough.
But certainly, you know, either it would be the 26th or the 19th or the 26th or the next two Saturdays. Deb could send out an email tomorrow asking commissioners, which is a better day for them? You don't want to do it the 4th of July weekend and the next meeting is the 8th. So then we could coordinate with Attorney McCoy and the engineer, Peter Gardner. We would hope that he would be there to attend as well.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Kyle to coordinate that so that we can get, make sure that we get dates where the applicants and Attorney McCoy are available and get commissioners there. So I'll let staff follow up with that. So Mr. McCoy, you'll get emails on Monday of next week and start trying to set up a date for that. We'll make sure that you can be there and then we'll get a couple, maybe get two days or two times that work for you. And then we'll get the commissioners to slot in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so I'll advise, you know, again, Ms. Ms. Burdick stated it, but you know, commissioners who are interested in seeing the site should be attending the site walk, not going to the site on their own outside of the site walk. And during the site walk, the, the, there is no comments from, from the public. So it is the commission being able to look at the site and we'll review those all during the site walk. But I, I think this is a good idea. So I thank you, Attorney McCoy, for being willing to court to help find a time for this to work. I think it's going to be a good thing.
Not a problem.
So with that, we'll go on to our next item, which is the discussion decision of PG 21-06 SUP. The public hearing for that was continued to our July meeting, so there is no action on that. With that, I am actually going to call a five minute recess. So my clock says 8:15 PM. So I'm going to call a recess until 8:20 PM before we continue with our agenda. So Ms. Burdick, you can pause the recording and we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. We are back from our recess. I'm just going to verify that all commissioners are back. Mr. Kapon.
I'm here.
Ms. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you for obliging me there. Okay, next on our agenda is application PG 21-07, Site 7 Fairway Drive. Applicant property owning Jacob Gere for site plan approval for commercial development auto repair facility. Proposed building and parking area. We received a request to table this agenda item on June 10th, 2021 from the applicant's agent, Mr. Gardner. So without further discussion, I will table that item. Next, under new business, we have no new applications to receive. The next item is discussion of House Bill 6107, An Act Concerning the Zone Enabling Act Accessory Apartments Training for Certain Land Use Officials, Municipal Affordable Housing Plans and a Commission on Connecticut's Development and Future. So I, I'm actually not going to discuss this too much tonight. This is still sitting on the governor's desk as far as I'm aware, so it has not been signed into law yet. So we don't, I, I assume that he will sign it, but it has not been signed yet, so it is not effective. We don't have an effective date yet. You know, we'll need to continue keeping our eye on this. You know, the most significant pieces in here are probably essentially making ADUs by right in, in all zones unless, you know, a super majority vote is passed by the commission and, and the town council. There's additional training. There's increased affordable housing plans, which to be fair, we have to update our affordable housing plan anyways. So that isn't too much of an effect. Probably the, the biggest piece of this, which I think is a bit unknown, is it specifies a working group to examine a number of zoning issues. And I think it's not quite clear how that working group will actually operate or what, what exactly is going to come out of that. So there are still a couple of things I think here that are a little up in the air on understanding what their impact will be. But it certainly seems like this will, this will be coming to us fairly soon. So what I'll, I'll ask, we'll just keep that up probably as an item on our agenda. You know, for July, presumably we'll have some, some clarification. And I assume once it's signed by the governor, we'll start getting guidance documents from various offices about what we'll need to do in order to comply with the new law. Because we will certainly have to make some regulation updates if this passes. Next item on our agenda is a CGS 824 review for the town council to recommend that the town of Leger accept ownership of the new Browns Crossing Bridge. I, I'm partway through this, so I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we recommend the town of Leger to accept ownership of the new Browns Crossing Bridge located on Browns Crossing Road, Gales Ferry from Genesee and Wyoming Railroad upon completion and certification. If I can get a second.
I'll second. Hillary Evans.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Evans. And so, yeah, so the, the, the brief story on this is this is a bridge over the railway easement that allows access to three parcels, to three parcels on the other side. It's a very old bridge. It was only ever originally rated as a six ton bridge. It's in a fairly substantial state of disrepair at this point, and so it's been downgraded to only three tons, which means that almost nothing can get across the bridge as it is now. You can't get emergency equipment across it. You can't get an oil truck across it. So something has to be done. A bunch of negotiations between the town and the railway. The railway has agreed to replace the bridge with a modern bridge as specified and agreed upon by the town engineer. At that point, once the new bridge is in place and certified, the town will take ownership of the bridge. Part of this discussion was essentially who owns the bridge? And it was decided in the past that the railroad probably owned the bridge. And the deal was if they were going to replace it, they didn't want to own it anymore, so that it would be the town's problem next time. The proposed bridge is expected to have an effective lifespan of something like 70 years, which is what was stated at LUPW by the mayor on Monday. And so this seems to be getting ourselves a, a, a bridge that will actually serve the parcels on the other side of, of the railway at, you know, essentially no construction cost to the town. But we will own this going forward. Anything to add, Ms. Burdick?
No, no, you, you summarized it really well. That's, that's exactly what it is. I, I don't know if all of you have seen the pictures, but it's in really tough shape.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not good. Questions, comments from commissioners?
Sounds like a deal from the town.
That, that was my take on it was we're going to get a, a pretty good bridge for no cost. And, you know, it means we'll have to deal with it next time, but you know, something's got to be done. So, yeah. Okay, hearing no other comments, I will head and call the vote on the motion to recommend the town of Leger to accept the bridge. Mr. Kapon.
Hi.
Ms. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And just for clarification, that town council actually accepted this yesterday contingent upon the 824 review. So with our affirmative vote, that should be done. Next up is the minutes from the May 13th meeting, for which I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Motion by Ms. Evans, second by Mr. Wood. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'll call the vote on the motion to approve the May 13th minutes. Mr. Kapon.
Hi.
Ms. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Next, under correspondence, we have a letter from Green Skies. Says, my name is Bonnie Pataki. I am with Green Size Clean Energy in North Haven, Connecticut. Excuse me, founded in 2009. Green Skies is constructed and operates over 230 megawatts of solar projects throughout the country. However, most of our work takes place here in Connecticut. I'm reaching out to you because we are developing a 1.99 megawatt ground mounted solar array at Lantern Hill Road. Incorporated, an integral part of our early stage development process is neighbor outreach. As a director brought her to the project site, we would like to, for reference, I have included a map project location in relation to your property. Please feel free to contact me at any time. Ms. Burdick, have you had any contact with them outside of this?
Yes. So, okay, so the mayor and I met with Bonnie Pataki and with her engineers that are working on this project. This is a project that is approved through the siting council. This is not a project that is approved by the planning and zoning commission. However, as part of the, their early development, they go to neighbor outreach. One thing that we had suggested to them was, you know, you've read in the paper in past years of some really bad erosion problems with these large solar arrays. And we asked them to address that. What will happen is once it goes to the siting council, the town will have an opportunity to comment. Whether they listen to the town or not is up to the siting council. So there will be a time, we will be formally notified when that application is submitted and we'll have the opportunity to comment. But she would like to know if any of the planning and zoning commissioners have any questions or comments right now that I can relay to her.
I mean, my, my first question was going to be what you've already addressed, which is, you know, we've seen a number of issues with this with erosion. I noticed that this is directly adjacent to Witford Brook. And so I would certainly want to understand, you know, if we start getting runoff, which direction is it going to go? And do we need to care about the state of Witford Brook? I, I don't actually know that waterway, so I don't, I don't know anything about it. I just saw it on the map. And so that was certainly my initial concern. The second question I had was, is, I, I assume the service for this is going to go to Shooville Road?
Well.
Is, is there going, is there going to be a dish?
Just, I also just want to remind, tell everybody, this project is not in Leger. So, and, and I don't have any details of where it's going to go exactly. Because what you see is what I've seen so far. I can tell you, the majority of the property is going to be, continue to be farmed. And then the solar array will be, will be in the location that's shown here. This is in Stonington, but Leger property is adjacent to it. So this is, the project is not actually in our town. We're not going to get any taxes from it. Let's put it that way. I don't know what kind of runoff we'll get from it, but that's something we've already brought up to the Bonnie and to her engineers when we met with them.
Yes. My other question was whether or not there is going to be infrastructure changes or support the power generated from the facility or infrastructure in Leger or not. I have no idea where the, I have no idea what kind of power infrastructure there is out there.
Yeah, I think it's the, the access to it will be coming through Stonington. It won't be through Leger and Road.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing next, or hearing none, next up is the town planner report. Ms. Burdick.
Yes. So hi, everybody. I'm, I'm coming to you remotely from across the country today. But I did get in on early Tuesday morning. I've been back to work since Wednesday. So things are moving along. I'm working with applicants, you know. One new thing that I'm working on for the rest of this month, and I have to put it on the town council agenda to get them to approve it, is there's an affordable housing plan grant that's being offered at this time. And I'd like to get that started as soon as possible because it's due by August, but it has to go through the town council process to be approved for us to even apply for it. So I'm hoping to get that started early next week so we can get on their agenda. I believe they only meet once in July and once in August. So we, we want to get approval to go forward with this. Our affordable housing plan is due next year, I believe July. I could be off on there, but we have to get it done. And this gives us money. A lot of towns I've seen on the listserv, a lot of RFPs, they're hiring consultants to do their affordable housing plan. And, you know, if the commission chooses to go that route, that will give us some funds to get that done.
Yeah, I'd support that. And if you need anyone else at the town council to support that, you know, it, it's, it's not a massive grant, but it gets us technical support to make sure that we get that done, done right. And, you know, and certainly my, you know, my hope would be that we'd not only get the affordable housing plan updated, but we'd be able to roll it into the P O C D so that we'd have it in, in a single location. And certainly bringing in, you know, a consultant to help with that, you know, would be, would be hugely advantageous. And it seems like there's definitely money out there right now to get that done. And so absolutely support it.
So that's what I'm up to. Otherwise, business as usual, but remotely.
Yeah, thank you very much. So for the zoning official report, I'm going to give Mr. Felice a pass. If commissioners have questions on his public report to the agenda, I'll ask them to give him an email and ask him any questions and we can talk about it at our next meeting. Mr. Felice had an emergency and had to leave, so we'll, we'll skip that for now. Any other reports from other commissions that anyone wishes to make?
Mr. Chairman, Tony Kapon. Just a comment from WPCA, Weston Simpson has been hired to do the engineering study for the proposed sewer line that's going to run from Leger Center out to Gallup Hill. And that's going to run under the proposed path. And it appears that we're going to be able to use American Recovery Act funds to fund this project. So it seems to be a win-win-win.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I heard a little bit about that and so I'm glad to hear it is moving forward like that. That's, that's great. Be able to excavate once and get a, get a couple of things out of it. So that's great.
And Mr. Chairman, the other thing, and if I may add to Mr. Kapon's report, the Leger Center feasibility study also is going to address, you know, alternatives. I mean, I think it's, of course, everyone's want is that the sewer line be running while we're digging for that cool path. That's the time to do it, but that study will also show various alternates that could be used by various developers or by the town.
Great, thank you. So the, the ad hoc committee did meet two weeks ago. The, sorry, the ad hoc committee for the Agregs did meet two weeks ago. We, the, the committee finished its review of the original draft proposal. And so finished sort of rewriting that. And so we expect our last meeting will be where we'll go through, you know, all those changes, make sure that it all still holds together and discuss a few outstanding issues there. But we fully expect that to read out at the end of, of June. And that recommendation will then go to the town council and back to this committee. And so, you know, I'll again, thank all the members for that who have been participating in that. It's been, it's been productive. So that's good. With that, any other comments from commissioners before we adjourn? Hearing none, without opposition, I will adjourn this meeting of the Leger Planning and Zoning Commission at 8:37 PM on Thursday, June 10th, 2021. Thank you very much, Deb. You can stop the recorder and I thank everyone for the